Would like to call to order the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting of February 18th, 2019. Welcome. It's good to have everybody with us tonight. We are very happy to have with us tonight Girl Scout Troop 2377 from Center United Methodist Church for our presentation of colors.
Color Guard Attention. Color Guard Advance. Color Guard Post the Colors. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color Guard Dismissed. You may be seated.
And to our Girl Scout troop, thank you very much, and we will recognize you after our invocation if you'll come up to the front. We're very happy to have with us tonight Pastor Bob Page from Connect Church of Charlotte for our invocation.
Glad to be here. Let's pray. Dear only fathers, we come before you tonight with humble hearts. Thank you for each person here, Father, for each leader that we've elected that's serving our community, Father. We pray that they would serve in their servant leadership roles, Father, humbly, and that they would serve with integrity and honesty. We thank you for the men and women that are serving. We thank you for their love for you. We thank you that they are serving our community, Father. And Father, we thank you for each person here that has appeared before them. We thank you for our wonderful county. And Father, we thank you for the many blessings you've given us, Father. We pray that everything that's said and done will bring glory and honor to your name. Please forgive us for our sins, Father, which are many, and draw us close to you. In Jesus' name we pray. In all God's people's said?
Amen. Thank you. We appreciate you being with us tonight. At this time, I'd like to ask Girl Scout Troop 2377 if you, all of you, would come to the front and tell us your name and something you enjoy about Girl Scouts. And Commissioner Honeycutt will have a pen to present to you as you go out to your left. And feel free to reach up and grab that microphone and pull it down if you need to.
My name is Haley Badger.
And if you would talk into the microphone so the folks at home on TV can hear you.
My name is Haley Badger. I am 12 years old. I go to CCRFA Middle School and is in the sixth grade. The thing I enjoy about Girl Scouts the most is learning skills that could help me in my future and creating a better world for everybody who lives there.
Wonderful. Thank you.
My name is Jamie Badger. I'm a freshman at Concord High School. My favorite thing to do in Girl Scout is being a leader and teaching other girls how to be a better person.
Thank you.
My name's Grace Singh. I'm in sixth grade. I go to Hickory Ridge Middle, and my favorite thing about Girl Scouts is helping people out.
Thank you.
My name's Today Andrews. I'm in third grade. I go to Harrisburg Elementary School, and I went looking for us this year for camping.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Julia Zong. I go to Hickory Ridge Middle, and my favorite thing to do at Girl Scouts is sell Girl Scout cookies because it helps me economically for better future skills.
Great. Thank you. And we encourage everybody watching to buy Girl Scout cookies. I've seen quite a few opportunities for that lately.
Hi. I'm Jelissa Andrews, and I'm a sixth grader at Hickory Ridge Middle School. My favorite part of Girl Scouts is making friends and helping the community.
Thank you.
My name is Addison Campbell, and I go to Pitt School Road at Tremely, and my favorite thing about Girl Scouts is earning the badges.
Great. Thank you. We appreciate all of you coming out tonight and presenting our colors for us. Would like to also welcome our Youth Commissioner, Jack Lambert. Jack, it's good to have you here. Great. So first up on our agenda tonight is the approval or corrections of the minutes. You all have copies of those before you. So do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as presented or any corrections you might have?
No.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to approval of the agenda, which you also have before you.
Minutes.
We just did the minutes.
I thought we just did it.
And we just did the minutes, now we're doing the agenda.
Yeah, I'll move for approval.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented, including the changes on page 28. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to recognitions and presentations. We are very happy to have a recognition tonight from Active Living in Parks for an Eagle Scout Service Project, and we're delighted to have Byron Hagler with us to bring that tonight.
Good evening. It is my pleasure this evening to recognize Mr. Alan Jennings Miller for not only his Eagle Scout Service Project, but also fulfilling the requirements necessary to obtain the rank of Eagle. Mr. Miller approached us with a well-thought-out plan, not necessarily the norm for some Eagle Scout projects that come to us, and I'm known as a stickler for Eagle Scout projects, but I was very impressed from the beginning when Mr. Miller approached us. He had a great plan for a bocce court, but at the time, we were in need of a pedestrian bridge out of Camp Spencer. This bridge was in disrepair, and it was needing to be replaced, and he jumped on the opportunity. Took it, not only did we receive design, but demolition, construction of the new bridge, which also included removing a lot of vegetation in the area as well. So the volunteers, under the leadership of Mr. Miller, provided the county with the things that I've mentioned, but also the guidance from the county's area manager, Kyle Billifer, Infrastructure and Asset Management's Director, Michael Miller, Assistant Director, Richard Stansel, and Building Maintenance Mechanic, Patrick Gordon, who assisted with all the necessary cuts and removal of the existing material. So it is my honor to present this plaque to him for his service to Cabarrus County.
I would first like to thank the county board for having us here. An Eagle project is a very complex thing to do. It requires a lot of people to help you, and I would like to recognize those people. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Hagler, whose staff was an absolute blast to work with. They provided me with the idea for the bridge, and they were just, they were an amazing help. I'd like to thank Mr. Patrick Gordon, who isn't here tonight, but he did the cutting for the bridge. He cut the boards and helped us assemble it on the day of construction. I'd like to thank my scout masters, Dr. Jones and Mr. Ruth, who not only helped me with the project, but they helped me with fulfilling my Eagle requirements. I'd like to thank everyone who was there on the day, including Mr. Patterson and Jacob Patterson, who were a humongous help in constructing the bridge. Finally, I'd like to thank my parents, who were there every step of the way, from Cub Scouts to Wee Below to finally Boy Scouts and now Eagle. I'm happy to provide a new footpath for the citizens of Cabarrus County.
Great. Thank you very much. We appreciate all your kind comments and appreciate what you've contributed to Cabarrus County. I think that Mr. Hagler should be very proud for you to say that he was a blast to work with. And compliments to your scout leaders. I know several of them personally and their commitment to scouting, and some of them were involved in my own son's path to Eagle Scout, and that certainly was a proud moment for me, so I know it is for your parents as well. So congratulations and thank you for what you've done for Cabarrus County. And we move now to a proclamation for Red Cross Month. Red Cross is something I think is very important to our community. I know that several of us commissioners have been involved with them over the years. I know both myself and Commissioner Honeycutt have been chairman of the board for Red Cross, so it is especially proud to present this proclamation, which I will read now. American Red Cross Month 2019. Whereas more than 137 years ago, the American Red Cross was established, a humanitarian organization guided by seven fundamental principles, including humanity, impartiality, independence, to promote those services to those in need regardless of race, religion, gender, sex, or citizenship status. Today, the Red Cross is one of the largest humanitarian organizations in the world and delivers its mission every day to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies. And whereas every year, the American Red Cross responds to an average of more than, and unfortunately, this is cutting off the edge of my... More than 62,000 disasters across the country, from small home fires to devastating massive disasters. Last year's large crises included mudslides in California, a volcano in Hawaii, wildfires in Colorado and California, destructive hurricanes in Florida and the Carolinas, and a devastating typhoon in U.S. Territories. In U.S. Territories, thousands of American Red Cross volunteers provided around-the-clock shelter for disaster victims, served millions of meals and snacks with partners, and distributed millions of relief items. And whereas in Cabarrus County, the Red Cross has a long history of helping our neighbors in need. The Southern Piedmont Chapter assisted with 179 local disasters in the past year alone and helped save lives through our home fire campaign. Since the campaign launched in October of 2014, the Southern Piedmont Chapter has worked with community partners to install smoke alarms and make households safer. Meanwhile, in the greater Carolinas region, the Red Cross handles an average of 7,779 military services every year and collects an average of 169,500 units of blood from our generous blood donors. And whereas March is Red Cross Month, a special time to recognize and thank the Red Cross volunteers and donors who give of their time and resources to help members of the community. The Red Cross depends on these local heroes to deliver help and hope during a disaster. We applaud our heroes here in Cabarrus County who give of themselves to assist their neighbors when they need a helping hand. And whereas the American Red Cross shelters, feeds, and provides emotional support to victims of disasters, supplies about 40% of the nation's blood, teaches skills that save lives, provides international humanitarian aid, and supports military members and their families. And whereas we dedicate the month of March to all those who support the American Red Cross mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies. Our community depends on the American Red Cross, which relies on volunteers and the generosity of the public to perform its mission. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim March 2019 as Red Cross Month and encourage all Americans to support this organization and its noble humanitarian mission. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt the proclamation.
Does I move?
Second.
Okay. Is there discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And that motion passes. And now I'm going to deal with my electronic issues here, which I think with my paper copy here, I'll be okay. Okay. And we move now to informal public comments. We do have the yellow cards at the end of each of the seating areas here, and we have three people that have submitted cards tonight. The first is Alan Dobson, and we ask that you come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, and try to keep your comments to three minutes, as is indicated on the timer there. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners and staff, Alan Dobson from Mount Pleasant, 1600 South Main Street, and appreciate the three minutes. I just wanted to speak generally to you. We've lived in Cabarrus County and specifically Mount Pleasant for 35 years, and as many of you know, Mount Pleasant is this little, small town community in eastern Cabarrus County. I think many of you have actually been out there recently. It's got a lot of history and pride and local support, and I know you also are aware of significant private investment that's being put in Mount Pleasant to preserve history and promote growth on our end of the county, along with changing, without changing the character of the community. That includes the historic restoration of now the second building, soon to be the third, new businesses, new residential growth, to name a few. And to put it quickly and shortly, we're putting property backs on the tax rolls for Cabarrus County. I believe Mount Pleasant's going to be a key contributor in helping distinguish our county from the urban sprawl down from Charlotte, making Cabarrus County indeed unique and an attractive place and with a variety of options for the county. So why I'm here tonight is just to ask you, the commissioners, help Mount Pleasant by making us a priority in your planning. To support our growth and a contribution to the county, we need services and investment like the rest of the county does. It's the public part of the public-private partnership, and we need it in front of growth, not just after growth. It's been several decades old, and our end of the county, we hear that we're always last in line, and I'm not sure if that's true or not, but that's kind of the perception of citizens out there. The community built the current library 20-plus years ago, gave it to the county. We also did the same for the EMS station. We've had significant recent investment in the middle school, and we really thank you for that. Mount Pleasant's really proud of its schools. But we actually need more to support people who live in the eastern part of the county. A park, which I know you're talking about, an expansion of our library, which is now, you know, old and too small for the size, and increase senior services. So I'm here to support the library expansion and other things that you can do. And I know with all your competing demands in budget and big projects, it's often easy to overlook the smaller ones, but we would really like you, ask you in your planning and financial commitments not to forget about us and help us get things done earlier versus later, and not to be an afterthought. I think that Mount Pleasant is a community that's ready to work with you, and I think we'll do good things. I think we're going to make you proud, and the eastern part of this county is one more place that will be on the map for people to come look at Cabarrus County. So thank you for your time, and I hope you will put us in your planning and financial commitments in the short term, not the long term. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rick Burleson.
Hey, good evening, folks. My name is Rick Burleson. I live at 8440 East Franklin Street in Mount Pleasant. I'm also the Cabarrus County Library Representative on the Board of Trustees from Mount Pleasant. And I want to thank you for allowing me to speak this evening, and I want to thank you for what you do for the county to help it thrive and grow. I want to let you know that Mount Pleasant is thriving and growing. There's some good things happening in Mount Pleasant. But as Dr. Dobson said, we have a wonderful library, but it has outgrown its space. We need more book space. We need more cubicles for tutoring and study areas. We need a dedicated room for our children's activities. All these things are not available in the space that we have now. A little over a year ago, the Friends of the Mount Pleasant Library came to you to talk about expansion, and from that meeting, they were asked to raise some money for some, look at, to help with the architecture and planning of a new library. In a little over seven months, they raised $25,000. In the meantime, that group also met with local elected officials and area leaders and residents to look for ways that we could help expedite this and make this happen. Recently, they've had discussions with the developers that purchased the old Mount Pleasant Middle School property. That developer is very interested in the possibility of building a library on that site, as well as keeping some of the amenities that are there that would benefit a library and our citizens, such as the gymnasium and the auditorium. They plan for it to be a walkable community with sidewalks, very pedestrian-friendly, and a library would fit well in that space. If that could happen, such a plan with a fair lease agreement could save the county a considerable amount of money, especially upfront capital. So all we're asking of you, all I'm asking of you, is to let your staff investigate this and give it a proper consideration for working with this developer for the possibility of putting a new library on that site. Lastly, I want to remind you that the annual Friends of the Mount Pleasant Library fundraising play is this Saturday night at 7:00 PM at the Mount Pleasant Middle School, and the play's titled Zeus on the Loose, and it looks like it's going to be a mythological hoot. So come out, please. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Our next speaker is Martha Dobson.
Martha Dobson, 1600 South Main Street, Mount Pleasant. I'm speaking on behalf of the Mount Pleasant Library Expansion. This is a project that's been on the capital improvement plan for years. The commissioners need a complete picture of the Mount Pleasant Library Expansion process in order to make informed decisions. In October 2018, Steve Morris agreed with library expansion leaders that creating a document to update the county commissioners on the work done and options for a library expansion would be helpful. This document was submitted to the library director in December, who requested that Marcia Morris, Amber Pope, and I attend the January 7th work session to answer commissioners' questions about the information, putting the item on the meeting agenda. County staff removed that item per email on January 3rd. Thus, commissioners lost an opportunity to ask questions and learn. To lessen this loss, we emailed that document to you. The January 23rd email from the county manager to Marcia Morris indicated lessened priority and interest in the library expansion as compared to a year ago. In January, I learned that the current owner of the former Mount Pleasant Middle School property, MP Development Partners LLC, wants to work with the county to put a larger library on its property. A February 1 meeting was called by Marcia Morris between three county staffers and the current owners of the property, including Tom Earnhardt, to facilitate discussion of this opportunity to work together and conserve costs to the county. Jonathan Marshall and Kyle Billifer were present for that part of the meeting. By the way, my husband, Alan Dobson, is not one of the owners. Tom Earnhardt and partners want to work with the county to put a larger library there and to investigate senior citizen services. They see this development's role as supporting Mount Pleasant and that area. This opportunity should not be squandered by waiting because they are planning the property's development now. If you're hearing about this February meeting for the first time, you've experienced another lost opportunity to learn how this expansion project can be brought to fruition. As county commissioners, it is in your purview to give direction to county staff. We request that you direct county staff to thoroughly and objectively evaluate the opportunity to work with Tom Earnhardt and partners to build a library now in a timely manner, as it is a time-sensitive opportunity. We request it be discussed at your February retreat and that the library expansion be put on the marked work session agenda for discussion with expansion leaders to give you the chance to learn about the possibilities. Thank you on behalf of the citizens of eastern Cabarrus County.
Thank you. Okay. And our next speaker is Michael Landers.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity. I come on behalf of high school teachers and teachers in Cabarrus County schools. I'm here to speak about Agenda Item G, which is the calendar flexibility item, and I truly appreciate the county commissioners yourselves taking the time to look at it in due diligence and consider its impact. And I really appreciate our Board of Education for drafting a resolution after seeing it impact our students directly for over a decade now. I'm not going to talk about test scores. That's what a lot of the reporting is. Test scores will go up. I'm going to talk about learning and our students and what is best for our young adults, our children here in the county, because that's why we're all here, the future. I see, I've seen firsthand when I taught in a system that allowed the fall semester on the four-by-four block to end before Christmas break, the holiday break that gives sometimes two and a half weeks off to students, and I saw the results in turning over and starting a new semester in line with the community college semester. And the difference is awe-striking. As a teacher in the classroom in the trenches, I'm an English II teacher. I have one of those tests that count for one-fifth of a school's performance grade, English II. I also teach AP English, which is also one of those tests that is currently being discussed as the impact. Hands down, when you finish a semester in the classroom teaching students in a spiral curriculum, which means we continually regenerate old ideas and bring in new ones constantly throughout the semester, and that leads up to time before, especially when it's a state-made exam that we have no control over, a brief review session and then the test. When you have a holiday break that's more than half of a month put in there, retention is not going to be strong at all. When we come back from the holiday break, and we have a workday usually, and then we get back into it, we spend the first four to five days reviewing the units and the learning that just happened right before Christmas. And then once we've accomplished that, we're already ready for the exams. In the traditional schedule back when the tourism industry didn't get their hands on it, which doesn't directly affect us in Cabarrus County with no ocean right near us, we were able to build on new units of study, new learning, right up to the moment a few days before the exam, oftentimes right up to the exam. And that learning was fresh, it was retained, and oftentimes resulted...
impact our students directly for over a decade now. I'm not going to talk about test scores. That's what a lot of the reporting, test scores will go up. I'm going to talk about learning and our students and what is best for our young adults, our children here in the county, because that's why we're all here, the future. I see, I've seen firsthand when I taught in a system that allowed the fall semester on the eight, four-by-four block to end before Christmas break, the holiday break that gives sometimes two and a half weeks off to students. And I saw the results in, in turning over and starting a new semester in line with the community college semester. And the difference is awe-striking. As a teacher in the classroom in the trenches, I'm an English II teacher. I have one of those tests that count for one-fifth of a school's performance grade, English II. I also teach AP English, which is also one of those tests that is currently being discussed as the impact. Hands down, when you finish a semester in the classroom teaching students in a spiral curriculum, which means we continually regenerate old ideas and bring in new ones constantly throughout the semester, and that leads up to time before, especially when it's a state-made exam that we have no control over, a brief review session and then the test. When you have a holiday break that's more than half of a month put in there, retention is not going to be strong at all. When we come back from the holiday break, and we have a workday usually, and then we get back into it, we spend the first four to five days reviewing the units and the learning that just happened right before Christmas. And then, once we've accomplished that, we're already ready for the exams. In the traditional schedule, back when the tourism industry didn't get their hands on it, which doesn't directly affect us in Cabarrus County with no ocean right near us, we were able to build on new units of study, new learning, right up to the moment a few days before the exam, oftentimes right up to the exam. And that learning was fresh, it was retained, and oftentimes resulted in greater success. The AP exams is one of the things that the state legislators want to throw back at a county like us, well, let's look at the data with the AP exams. That's a fallacy because all the schools operate their AP instruction in different ways. You have the eight-day, B-day schedule all year, you have fall semesters, you have spring semesters, and you have whole-year classes. There's no way to definitively look at AP data and say, see, this is how it was before the calendar flexibility back in two thousand and five, and here it is now. The state also started paying for AP exams to be taken by our students, which has also increased the number of AP exams taken statewide. So we can't get caught up in that, and I read a report today on WSOC-TV that said the tourism industry said that we needed, we needed to think that our tax dollars provided to the tourism industry was directly helping our schools. And I think as soon as we get caught up in that fallacy, we're, we're doing a job that is not ours. Our job is not the legislator's job in Raleigh to determine how the tax money is used, so the tourism industry doesn't need to dictate what's best for our students. We'll figure it out, our state legislators will figure it out, and we will still be able to prevail, but our students and their learning will be priority number one. And our, we have two great early college programs here as well. Those are now causing families to be split up on two entirely different schedules. If a student goes to one of our early colleges and they have siblings in our traditional schools, it breaks that family's schedule up dramatically. I could go on for more than my three minutes, but I really appreciate the effort by the commissioners and our Board of Education to see this and say that Cabarrus County Schools needs calendar flexibility, and we don't need to be treated as if we're the tourist industry at the beach, and that should dictate what's best for our students. Because what's best for our students comes from the classrooms, the families, the homes, and through our elected officials right here in our backyard. And I appreciate your time in taking a look at it.
Thank you. And I think that's all of the yellow cards that have been submitted tonight. We appreciate everybody's input, and we now will move to our consent agenda, which you all have before you. And I will mention, as I normally do, that all of the items on our consent agenda are things that we have discussed at length at our work session two weeks ago. So, so we, we do that to give, we talk about those things at our work session. That allows two weeks for both the public and the commissioners to ask any questions or get any additional information that they might need. And so at this time, what would be your pleasure on the consent agenda, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Do we accept the consent agenda as presented?
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move now to new business. First item from Department of Human Services is our Transportation fifty-three-ten Elderly and Handicap Grant, which does require a public hearing, but prior to that, we will hear from Bob Bushy.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me be before you this evening. This is a federal fifty-three-ten elderly and handicap grant administered by the City of Concord. We have applied to them and have been awarded a grand amount of one-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars to help provide senior and handicap trips in the urbanized area of Cabarrus County. This does require a fifty percent match of eighty-five thousand oh ninety-one. However, we are allowed to make that match up with our state fifty-three-ten grant and a home care and community block grant, so there will be no budget amendment or local match required other than those amounts. Does require a public hearing. We ask that you hold the public hearing and then accept the grant and the associated paperwork.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bushy? Okay, hearing none, we will open the public hearing and invite anyone to the podium that would like to comment on the Transportation fifty-three-ten elderly and handicap grant. Okay, seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to accept the grant and authorize the budget officer to prepare an appropriate budget amendment if needed.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Item G two is Cabarrus County Schools' Calendar Flexibility Resolution. Did you have anything to add to that, County Manager Downs?
No, sorry, I have nothing. The, the school board did have a hearing on this as well, and they have passed that on to us and asking that you, you take it on and endorse or support their, their cause.
Okay, and we do have a proposed resolution, which I will read. Resolution: Supporting Local Control of School Calendars. Whereas North Carolina general statutes give local boards of education powers of supervision and control of local school systems, and whereas local control over establishing school calendars should be an integral component of school system supervision and administrative powers with which local boards of education are vested. And whereas in two thousand and four, the North Carolina General Assembly legislated control of setting school calendars and imposed a single statewide system on how school calendars are set. And whereas the current calendar system sets school start dates no earlier than the Monday closest to August twenty-sixth and end dates no later than the Friday closest to June eleventh. And whereas Cabarrus County Schools has implemented two successful local early college programs, which directly benefit student learning and outcomes, yet must operate on a calendar different from other high schools in order to align with the community college, and this calendar discrepancy causes hardships to family vacations, including visits to North Carolina tourist locations. And whereas the state's mandated late-August start date means high schools do not complete the first semester until mid to late January. And whereas current statutes force Cabarrus High School students to take the first semester exams after the winter break, which negatively impacts test scores. And whereas the second semester for high schools starts two to three weeks later than community college and university schedules. And whereas the calendar misalignment severely restricts high school students and recent winter graduates from taking courses at nearby community college or universities during the second semester and deprives parents of opportunities to save tuition costs as their students earn transferable college credits. And whereas exam for advanced placement in international baccalaureate classes must be conducted on the same day nationwide, and the current calendar North Carolina law shortens the amount of time North Carolina students have the, to learn the material before the nationwide test day. And whereas constrictive state mandates on local calendar needs constrain the local administration's opportunities to manage classroom instructional hours for the greatest advantage to students. And whereas major hurricanes and severe winter storms have caused Cabarrus County Schools to miss ten school days over the past one and a half school years, and over eight school start time delays of two or more hours. Whereas schedules for fall sport and band extracurriculars have not changed to coincide with the state mandated school calendar. And whereas local boards of education and district staff are best equipped to understand how to balance meeting the community's needs and maximize student success. And whereas restoring local control, control of school calendars will allow local boards of education to meet calendar needs and preferences of the families, educators, and businesses in Cabarrus County while allowing for innovative experimental approaches to improve student achievement. Therefore, be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Education and the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners request that the North Carolina House and Senate pass legislation allowing calendar flexibility for Cabarrus County Schools. Do I hear a motion that this proclamation be adopted?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? I think we've heard a lot of conversation about this. I read an article in, I think, this morning, Charlotte Observer, that indicated, I want to say somewhere between twenty and thirty bills that have been passed addressing this in some fashion or the other, so it certainly is a topic of interest across the state.
Mr. Chairman, just that, I do want to make up, this has been, as you said, it's been a discussion with all of the counties several years now at their Legislative Goals Conference, and this year, the conversation was not unlike previous years. There was some that were for and some that were against, but this resolution here gives the local authority, doesn't require you to change your calendar, it gives the local authority, the local school boards, the option to change their calendars if they so choose.
Right. And I think we are very fortunate in Cabarrus County to have such healthy early college high school programs in conjunction with our community college. And I think a lot of people don't realize that some of these students attending these early college high schools graduate from high school with two years of college credit already under their belt. And that, that means a lot to, to families trying to pay those tuition costs and provide for higher education. So it, it is, we're, we're very fortunate in that regard. Is there other discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. We move now to Item G three, Kannapolis Sidewalk Easement, and Jonathan Marshall will talk with us about that.
Thank you very much. We received a request from the city of Kannapolis that you add this to your agenda, and I appreciate you doing so. And they are opening bids tomorrow on a sidewalk project that provides better access to both an elementary and high school, that property located South Harding Avenue and East First Street. What they discovered in that process is that, of course, Cabarrus County owns some of that property. And so becoming aware of this, Wilmer Melton had asked that you add this to your agenda and approve this easement.
Great. Any questions for Mr. Marshall? I think we've got pretty, pretty clear self-explanatory maps and, and documents here. So do I hear a motion to approve the request for the sidewalk easements?
No, pro per.
Great, okay. We have a motion and a second, and I'll read this motion, make sure you agree. Motion to approve the easements between Cabarrus County and the city of Kannapolis and authorize the county manager to execute the easement document on behalf of Cabarrus County, subject to review or revisions by the county attorney. Is there discussion on that motion? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you. We move now to appointments to boards and committees. First up is Active Living in Parks Commission. The Active Living in Parks Commission voted unanimously to recommend the board's consideration to appoint Sarah Newell to the Kannapolis Planning District seat. Ms. Newell lives less than a mile outside the Kannapolis Property District and has a Kannapolis address. The Active Living in Parks Commission is requesting an exception to the residency provision of the appointment policy due to the length of time this seat has been vacant. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to appoint Sarah Newell to the Active Living in Parks Commission for a three-year term ending January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, including an exception to the residency provision of the appointment policy.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Next is appointments to the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. Helen McGinnis has completed her orientation class, has been certified by the state omsbudsman, and is now eligible to be appointed to the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. Ms. McGinnis also serves on the Board of Equalization and Review. An exception to the service on multiple boards provision of the appointment policy will be needed for her. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to appoint Helen McGinnis to the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee for an initial one-year term ending February twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty, including an exception to the service on multiple boards provision of the appointment policy.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to the Fireman's Relief Fund Trustees. The Cabarrus County Volunteer Fire Departments have submitted the following individuals for appointment or reappointment as Fireman's Relief Fund Trustees. That would be Chris Whiting from Allen Volunteer Fire Department, Raymond N. Blackwelder Jr. from Coldwater, Artie Craig from Flo's Store, Nicole Beaver from Georgeville, Tim Wooton from Harrisburg, Darrell Page from Midland, Betty White from Mount Mitchell, Lori Furr from Mount Pleasant Rural, Richard Bergeron the second from Northeast, Jacob Williams from Odell Volunteer Fire Department, and Kelly Ritchie from Reimer Volunteer Fire Department. These appointments are exempt from the county appointment policy. Recommendations are submitted by each of the respective volunteer fire departments. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to appoint Chris Whiting, Lori Furr, Kelly Ritchie, and to reappoint Raymond Blackwelder Jr., Artie Craig, Nicole Beaver, Tim Wooton, Darrell Page, Betty White, Richard Bergeron the second, and Jacob Williams to the Fireman's Relief Fund Trustees for two-year terms ending January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we now move to Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee. The terms for Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee members, Tim Louder, Betty Bab, and Mary Whitman expired December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. At the Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee meeting on November nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, the committee voted unanimously to have all three members serve another term. A letter of recommendation is included in the agenda. Ms. Bab and Ms. Whitman are both willing to serve another term. Ms. Bab has served on this committee since two thousand and nine. An exception to the length of service provision of the appointment policy will be needed for her. Mr. Louder has declined serving another term due to other work commitments. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to remove Tim Louder from the Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee and thank him for his service.
No, pro per.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and I would further entertain a motion to And I would further entertain a motion to reappoint Betty Bab and Mary Whitman to the Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee for three-year terms ending December 31, 2021, including an exception to the length of service provision of the appointment policy for Ms. Bab.
It's a move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. You will notice in your agenda that we have a number of reports that are attached for your examination, and at this time, I would like to receive updates from commission members who serve as liaisons to municipalities or on various boards and/or committees. You had some things, Commissioner Honeyback.
I do. I have one from the Department of Human Services that with the signing of the federal budget spending bill, the Food and Nutrition Services Program is fully funded through September 30, 2019. Food and nutrition service recipients will receive notifications via email and robo-calls regarding March and April staggered issuances of benefits to ensure no recipients go beyond 60 days from the early issuance done on January 20. And then, from the Senior Center Advisory Board, I have a few announcements. They wanted people to know about upcoming events. There's a Senior Health and Wellness Expo on Wednesday, March 13, from 10:30 to 2:00 p.m. at the Cabarrus Arena and Advent Center. Features health screenings, educational sessions, demonstrations, informational exhibits, and more, and it's free for admission. And then, there's a What Not Variety Show Sunday, March 17 at 3:00 p.m. at the Senior Center with entertainment providing benefit to the Cabarrus County Senior Center Scholarship Fund. There's also a Dress to the Nines Fashion Show, March 19 at 6:00 at the Senior Center. And then, the Cabarrus Senior Games are coming up. Competition in more than 70 sports and arts categories for persons 50 and older. Registration continues through March 22, and you can go to www.cabarruscounty.us/senior-games. I don't think anybody's going to get all that, but if you go to the website and look for Senior Games, you'll be good. For more information, to attend a free clinic on Friday, March 8, 1:30 about that. So, we invite you to check out the senior website area. There's a lot going on there, and for anybody that's interested in getting involved.
Great, thank you.
You know, if you follow the county on Twitter, Kasha does an incredible job of putting what you just said, all of that out. So, all you have to do is...
Links included.
Yeah, you just have to follow, and the information will be right on your phone right after the meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm a liaison for Midland Town Council, and they're very excited about the new library opening down there on, well, I guess it's going to open sometime around the first week in March, but we're having a ribbon cutting on February 26 at 6:00 in the evening. So, we want to invite everyone to come out and see the Midland Library open. They've been having a partial library for about a year or so now, but they're going to have a facility now that they can call their own. So, we want to welcome everybody to come out and join us for that ribbon cutting, 6:00, February 26.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other reports? Okay, I will mention that we do frequently have openings on various county boards and commissions. If you will check our website, there are listings there, or call our clerk in the county manager's office, and she will be happy to assist with anybody that is interested and willing to volunteer on any of our county boards or committees. And we move now to general comments by board members. And we will include our youth commissioner in that as well, if you have anything you would like to report.
Don't move, sir.
Okay, great. Any other? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I forgot to mention a while ago, well, this would be a good time for it, we're talking about ribbon cuttings. Join us on February 27 at 4:00 for the parking deck ribbon cutting. And so, we'll be glad to get that done. Kyle done an excellent job on getting that, staying right behind it and getting everything. And I would suppose this opening sometime around the first week in March, too. Is that right, Kyle? First day of March is when it will be open to the public, but the ribbon cutting is on February 27 at 4:00 back at the parking deck. So, welcome everybody to come out and join us for that.
Great, thank you. Any other reports or comments? I will say that I spent this past week for a week-long seminar in Chapel Hill, North Carolina with the School of Government. This was with a number of other counties from across the state, as well as some municipalities. And the big takeaway that I had from that experience, and it was a very good experience, was as I talked with other counties and municipalities across the state, it made me truly appreciate what we have here in Cabarrus County, both from our Board of Commissioners and the relationships that we have working together, as well as all of our staff. We have a lot to be proud of, so that was a good experience for me. If there are no other comments, we do have need of a closed session tonight. So, at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation and personnel matters pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318, Point 11A, 3, and 6.
It's a move.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And we are now in closed session. Thank you.